Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of council for Tuesday, July 18, 2023. Will the clerk please take the roll call? Is she here?
No. Clerk's not here.
I couldn't see.
I think they're working on revision by the president.
Yeah. Sorry, ma'am clerk, I thought you were out here.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kalesmith, President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Removed.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. The next order of business is proclamations. We have one to be presented by Councilwoman Strasburger. Councilwoman?
Everyone here for Plastic-Free July could come up. So we have a proclamation. It was brought to my attention that July is actually a Plastic-Free July celebration month to bring awareness to the need to reduce our consumption and our disposal of single-use plastics in particular. Everyone knows that we did pass a ban on single-use plastic bags and finally looking forward to being implemented. We have someone on staff now whose sole job it is right now to help implement this, so it goes into effect this October. And it would not have been possible without the people standing next to me and a whole coalition of groups. So with that, whereas Americans generate over 35 million tons of plastic waste every year, but less than 6% is recycled, and whereas studies have also estimated that by 2050, there will be more plastic in our oceans than fish, and whereas in Pennsylvania, plastic is the most common form of visible litter, whereas the Department of Transportation spends over $13 million every year cleaning up just roadside litter, nine of the largest cities in Pennsylvania spend over $68.5 million every year on litter and illegal dumping, with $46.7 million of that going toward litter abatement. And whereas the environmental and health impacts of microplastics are robust, microplastics pose severe suffocation and starvation risks to wildlife and have been found in our air, food, and bodies, whereas microplastics also attract pollutants that may already exist in the environment at trace levels, accumulating toxins like DDT and PCBs, which are industrial products or chemicals, and delivering them to wildlife that eat them, often bioaccumulating through the food chain. Whereas Penn Environment collected and analyzed samples from rivers, lakes, and streams across Pennsylvania, and microplastics were found in every single waterway from the Three Rivers and Chartiers Creek to Lake Erie and beyond. Whereas 17 Pennsylvania cities, including Pittsburgh, boroughs, and townships have passed bans and other restrictions on single-use plastics. These laws cover over 16% of Pennsylvania's population and could eliminate over 790 million single-use plastic bags every year, equivalent of over 4,400 tons of plastic waste. And whereas Plastic-Free July is a global movement that helps millions of people be part of the solution to plastic pollution, so we can have cleaner streets, oceans, and beautiful communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the risks that plastic waste posed to our environment and to humanity, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of July to be Plastic-Free July in the City of Pittsburgh.
You have a motion to approve in a second.
Removed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to invite representatives from the groups here today to say a few words. We have Penn Environment, we have Humane Action Pittsburgh, and we have Allegheny Cleanways represented as representatives of a larger coalition of groups. I'd like to say a few words. Well, thank you so much. Well, I'd like to thank council for taking action on this important issue and for celebrating Plastic-Free July. This is a really good opportunity to continue to educate the public about the plastics problem and what people can do both personally in their own homes and to advocate for policies in their own community. And I'm delighted to share that since this proclamation was written days ago, the number of municipalities in Pennsylvania that have addressed plastic waste with policies has risen to 20. So we've gotten three, I think, in the last week and a half. So we know that that means we'll save about 843 million plastic bags a year in Pennsylvania just with these 20 policies. So what you're doing here is very important. I would also like to say, now that Pittsburgh has passed a policy, several others in Allegheny County are considering their own policies. So you are influencing our region with the actions you take here. And again, just thank you so much for introducing this and passing this today. Thank you.
Thank you. I know a lot of you and appreciate all you've done for Allegheny Cleanways, but this is huge for the city and for the county, for the region, and so grateful. We just finished, just to put this into context, we just finished a cleanup of the Mon River from DeNora. We started in DeNora, ended at the Point, and removed about 10 tons of trash. And about 75, 76% of that was plastics. So all of that, and I'm sure this doesn't come as a surprise to you, but it's 10 times more expensive to remove it from the rivers than it is from the land. So once it gets into our waterways, and we're just getting a tiny, tiny portion of that. So very grateful. Thank you so much for all your work.
I'll make it quick. I'm Natalie Alwes, Executive Director of Humane Action Pittsburgh. Thank you so much to all of you on council for this proclamation, and especially councilperson Strasburger. As we are transitioning to take over the Pittsburgh Plastics Collaborative, we'd like to invite all of your offices to send a representative to be a part of that group as we work to reduce single-use plastic in Pittsburgh and hopefully help implement the plastic bag ban that you all worked so hard on. So thank you again.
Can we ask questions? Are we allowed?
Yes.
I just, I have a-
Or is this gonna be another hour and a half on the conversation?
No, no, but I think you know how passionate, you know, I share your passion with the subject. And the, you know, even me, as closely connected to the topic as I have been over the years, struggled with making certain that when I showed up, wherever I showed up, I took a bag with me. And until I really made a conscious effort that no matter what, even if I forgot the bag, I just put it in the cart, took it to the car, and then put it in the bag, so that I, you know, at every opportunity, don't take a bag. Any store I'm in, the first thing I will say to someone is, can I please go without a bag? Some people are like, oh my God, yes. And others are like, excuse me? You know? So my question is this, how do we, is there, can we talk at some point in time about better ways to encourage business to be cooperative with us, to suggest, you don't have to leave here with a bag, you know? Or have, do you remember to bring your bag? I'm always, I'm always sort of shocked, I guess, at the times that I'm in a grocer, and I am literally the only one in that store carrying my own bag. And it's, you know, we need, we need help from business to encourage and educate consumers as to how and why it's so important to bring their own bag. I'll stop.
Okay, Councilwoman Strasburger, you have one to be read into the record. And Councilwoman Gross. Can we read them both? Madam Clerk?
Need to ask someone, said the Jewish cemetery that he's been, need it cleaned up. And another cemetery, I thought, Jewish, it's usually clean.
Okay, Councilwoman Strasburger, you have one to be read into the record. And Councilwoman Gross. Can we read them both? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Strasburger presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, July 20, 2023, to be Raymond Volplatt Senior Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilmember Gross presents, now therefore be it resolved, that the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, July 18, 2023, to be National Senior Games Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Do you have a motion to approve in a second?
Removed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations are approved. Thank you. And our next order of business is public comment. And I would like to remind everybody, everyone, that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen.
They say not shady deals in Bon Air. First, do no harm, it's not just a rule of medicine. Government shall not harm the people or can be held accountable. Blockbusting and infliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose the property owners of Bon Air do so at their own peril. Politicians and municipal servants are their public servants. My husband was the dedicated model of employee that should be emulated by others. The public school board of Ed in Pittsburgh has zero regard for the rights of the property owners, taxpayers, citizens, and voters in the Bon Air community. We do not consent to the detrimental school building. We name our community based to replace the building and improve the location. This is the least that can be done to repair the loss that has occurred. The public servants of the school board shall work with the community to the best of their ability. It was fraudulent to claim that the community approved apartments. The waste, fraud, and abuse of school tax resources is tremendous regarding the long-closed school. The school board has proven itself detrimental. Will you be part of the solution? On June 20, 2022, detrimental Bon Air school building worsened and became a disruptive and nuisance property. We have objected to apartments or anything other than a green space to replace the school. Tear it down. The building is a magnet to use in addition to trespassing on the property. Three of the seven had to be escorted out of the building. Tear it down. Other neighborhoods have been blighted with worse. Do not allow it to happen to Bon Air. The outcry to the school board has proven futile. Put pressure on them to sell it to the city for a dollar. Tear it down. Now that McCandley Park is no longer part of Bon Air, we want the school to become a green space as replacement. Open deals, not shady deals in Bon Air.
She's still on? Okay, our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Souver, La Soffu, Masaru. I'm a Global Intelligence Society U.S. national candidate for president. I want thousands of people to run for president, not just myself, but many people to run. We have a lot of intelligent people, less DPRP, to put it mildly. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. A concern of this council is Africa, should be. I and the Global Intelligence Society are seeking a link with La Soffu, which its capital city is first in gender equality in Africa. A concern of this all Democratic Party Pittsburgh City Council is gender equity. This council supports the Gender Equity Commission. Equality, as far as I'm concerned, is all of us being treated as equal in birth, that under law, the U.S. Constitution says yes to that. Equity, some are leveraged and divided against others. The DP here and across the United States, in my view, are using uncompetitive inequality to get equity. An intersectionality theory is central to this. A central reference is Kimberle Crenshaw, demarginalizing the intersection of race and sex in 1988. I encourage all of you to read it if you haven't already. She's brilliant. I think she's wrong. In order to get equity, demarginalization must occur. Marginalized females and non-white racials and ethnics must be advantaged over males and whites. So marginalizing the groups that are viewed by tiers as most responsible, white males, and so using re-marginalization to reduce marginalization, which is sociopolitical pathological neurosis, as far as I'm concerned. Intersectionalist sex-gen entities like the Gender Equity Commission institutionalize sexism. At the 18, June 2018 meeting, there was a reference to intersectionalism. There are no, as far as I know, there are no males on the board. There were no male visitors identified. I volunteered to be part of this Gender Equity Commission speaker last week. I have no communication with that person at all. You can't have equity by eliminating half of the population.
Our next registered speaker is Jo Demming. Jo?
Good morning, everybody. Hope you're all doing well. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Joanna Jo Demming, the Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council. I've been so grateful for the opportunity to work with you all around the Food Justice Fund and all of your support over the last many months. And I'm here to encourage you today to pass the Food Justice Implementation Plan. As you've heard from myself and many other speakers before me, that the fund is critical to addressing food apartheid, food justice, and systemic equities in the city. Systemic inequities that led to the situation we're in, such as highways being built through predominantly black neighborhoods in the name of urban renewal, injustice such as redlining and systemic disinvestment in communities like mine, injustices such as relocating people to communities that lack transportation and grocery stores. I've told you my own stories of witnessing my neighbors struggling to get food, and you've heard from many others about the challenges that their neighbors have faced. The good news is that there are many amazing people working to create solutions. The good news is that you guys are supportive of addressing these issues, and that the Food Justice Fund will build the capacity of food pantries to serve people, build the capacity of urban gardeners to grow, help people access nutritious, healthy, appropriate food, and eliminate food waste through composting and education. We've been so grateful again for this opportunity. We ask that you not only pass the fund, but you make sure that it has capacity to be successful, it's fully staffed and funded to be successful, so that there are no delays, and we can start to get it implemented. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Jody McLoughlin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jody McLoughlin, and I'm a member of the Food Justice Fund Committee. I would like to once again thank you all of council for getting us where we are today with the Food Justice Fund. And I first want to encourage you to pass the proposed plan for the Food Justice Fund today. Second, I want to encourage city council, the city and its departments, and supporting partners to stay mindful as to why food justice funds have become necessary tools to end food inequality, including food apartheid in urban areas like Pittsburgh. The neighborhoods who will benefit the most from the Pittsburgh Food Justice Fund have gone without for decades. The choice to disinvest in these communities was deliberate and racist. I'm in the process of completing my master's in public health. And structural violence, which is the act of social structures and institutions causing harm to people to deprive them of basic needs, is common terminology we use when discussing the disproportionate health problems within communities of color. It's also a key term used in a class I'm currently taking exploring violence as a public health issue. Reinvestment in communities through programs like the Food Justice Fund are one of the appropriate steps necessary to rebuild these communities and lift people up. Lastly, I feel it necessary to use this opportunity to echo what others have said before about the need for interdependency. We all need to continue to work together and find new ways of collaboration where civic work is traditionally siloed. This may mean convening zoning specialists, the URA, and outside stakeholders to clear the way for real transformational change. It may also mean proposing additional legislation to protect revived communities from gentrification. And most importantly, it means prioritizing social capital over economic development. This is a, there is a growing body of evidence in public health and social research that investment in people creates individual and community empowerment, which leads to stronger community engagement and collective efficacy. These communities find the way to make their neighborhoods thrive, and we must be willing to clear the paths to make that happen. So thank you for the opportunity to speak again today, and I thank you again for getting us this far. Please pass the Food Justice Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Jamie Marie Christian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for sharing your space and time with us once again. My name is Jamie Marie Christian. I am the founder and executive director of Let Us Turn Up the Beat Sustainability Collective and an active member of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council Food Justice Fund. I'm going to keep it short and sweet today, because I think I've probably said as much as I can say. I mean, I could go on and on and on for hours, but we don't have hours. I will just say this. We appreciate your time and your support, and everybody actively listening to us when we are here, being present in the moment, and really engaging with the Food Justice Fund Committee. So at this time, I'd like to offer you my services and support. I've begun the process, I'm actually spearheading the process, to start an Allegheny County Farm Bureau. It is much needed in Allegheny County. There's been conversation around it for many years now, but it's never come to fruition. And I'm actually meeting today with Tyler Anderson. I spoke with him for about an hour yesterday. He's a very, very nice man. And the Westmoreland County Farm Bureau, they're willing to help our farmers currently until we get this established. So I think at this point, you all have my card. Please feel free to share my information with any of the farmers, anybody looking to become a farmer in your area, and we'll be happy to help them in any way we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Pastor Latulav. Pastor Latulav, is he online? No? Okay. Our next registered speaker is Tiara Collins.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having us today. My name is Tiara Collins, and I am from the Old District. First, I really just want to tell you all a little story. I have an 11-year-old, which most of you know. He has Down Syndrome. A couple weeks ago, we took a ride. And during this ride, I went the wrong way. And when I went the wrong way, he said, mommy. I said, what? He said, you're going the wrong way. Turn around. I said, what? He said, you went the wrong way. Mom, turn around. I said, okay. He said, you want me to turn around? He said, yes. So I turned around, and then I go back, and I make another turn. He says to me, good job, mommy. We're going the right way now. So when we get to our destination, he tells me where to turn in, and I turned in. I said, is this the right place? He says, yes. So basically, the moral of the story is, we don't listen. We never listen to our kids because we think we know more than them. A child who I was told that wouldn't walk or talk until he was 11 was able to tell me that I was going the wrong way. And because I chose to listen, I got to go where I was going. So in that, we get to go to the grocery store. He picks out his own food. He tells me what we're having for dinner. He lets me know if we're having chicken, rice, and broccoli. Sunday, we had barbecue chicken and baked macaroni and cheese that my 12-year-old granddaughter made, and greens and cabbage that I made from scratch, because I don't do canned greens, because they're disgusting. So the moral of my story is, I just want to thank you guys for listening. The Food Justice Fund is really important. And I know it's important, and I know you guys know it's important. Being on the board with the Food Justice Fund, the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council, Pittsburghers for Public Transit, Commissioners for Human Relations, I can go on and on and on, but all the boards that I'm on, the bottom line is, I do this for advocacy. Why? Because I have Judah. I have a daughter who's about to turn 30, who's had her transplant. Post-five months, he's doing great. Blood pressure for me has been the best it's ever been in 10 years. So I know you guys have this on your table. I'm asking you to support it for lots of reasons. So Judah can finish going to the grocery store and picking out his own food for dinner, because he loves to pick out his own food, and he picks out healthy things. He likes broccoli. He likes cabbage and greens. He likes green beans. He likes asparagus. I don't, but he does. So guess what? I buy it and cook it anyways. So, but for us to be able to access these things in our neighborhood would be absolutely amazing. So I'm done with my story. Thank you for your time, and have a great day.
Thank you. Dana Lee Doni. Dana?
Hi, everyone. My name is Dana Doni. I am the grassroots organizer at Just Harvest. I also live in Polish Hill. I have come here so many times, and today I'm not going to have a piece of paper that I'm reading through, because I really want to just thank you all. And I'm here to push this across the line today. This has been a labor of love for so many of us. And I'm trying not to get emotional, because I had a really rough day today in the other work that I do. And we don't often get victories. As a grassroots organizer, we don't get victories every day. This is a victory for so many of the communities that I serve. Today, I had to hear about some setbacks in the community that I serve. And when we are dealing with the kind of violence that we have been dealing with post-pandemic, and we see that so much of it comes from a lack of access, when we get these small victories that might just be a mobile market or a corner store, you don't know what that means for hope for a community. So thank you all. Thank you for caring. Thank you for understanding what this means. Thank you for putting up with us week after week. I want to go back to where I do the best work, and that's in the communities that you all represent. So please pass this today without any further delay, and then please take me up on my offer for each and every one of you to help you identify those that need these resources. I commit, not just as Dana Doni. I joke. Sometimes I'm in communities, and I have my Just Harvest hat on, and sometimes I have my Just Dana hat on. So I'm coming to you all today as Just Dana, no matter what. That's how important this is, that I am here to help each and every one of you in the communities identify the people that need these resources. I will work with you to help make this a success. So thank you for expediting this. And I will for once leave with a minute on the clock. Thank you all.
And let me thank you for that. And our next registered speaker is Poma Chakmam Yehaliyee. John?
Thank you so much. You pronounced my title so beautifully. I appreciate that so much.
Thank you.
I am Grandinka Chief, Poma Chakmam Yehaliyee, of the Onkwe Onwe. I am Grand Inca Chief Espomay Chakmam Yahali of the Onkwa Onway Bakab Kowu Shil Ushwe Il and the Grand Chief Council Member of the Airflock Confederacy of Aboriginal Native American People. I want to give thanks to you, Councilperson Schlossberger and others for being good stewards on our Love is Plastic initiative to remediate the damage done by commerce colonization. I won't belabor the point, I'll just add my support in the passing of the Food Justice Plan legislation. Many people have spoken before me, have spoken eloquently and you know this is very dear to all of us. This need of good organic locally grown foods is a direct result of unlawful acts such as the Racial Integrity Act, which reclassified my people from Indian into colored and Negroes. The Indian Removal Act and the Homestead Act and many other ill-conceived policies and degradations and depredations upon Aboriginal American indigenous peoples here of the Americas. And now's the time to be bold and be brave and do something great to assist indigenous peoples here in creating local food for us to repair, restore, and remediate our communities which were once grew many types of fruits, perennial vegetables, and perennial edible and medicinal herbs. Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 is very clear. The representatives in direct taxes shall be a portion among the several states, which may include within this union according to their respective numbers, which will, shall be determined by adding the whole number of free persons, including those bound to service for a term of years. And those are all of the citizens that are here in this area working and excluding Indians not taxed, for we are excluded out of the jurisdiction, but we are, although we are to be included in the discussions that happen upon our lands. And the A-Drip and the U-Drip are very clear on our rights, as there are many that aren't even listed here, then we will say what those are. Indigenous people, we have a right to have a right not to be subject to assimilation or the destruction of our culture. We are not citizens, although we are here and we have every right for our voices to be primary in decisions that relate to the outcome that would affect us. And all states shall provide effective mechanisms for prevention and redress of any action that has harmed us. Any action that dispossesses us of our lands and our territories and our resources and food is a resource. Any form of forced population transfer removing us out of our areas and making room for other people and other entities without our free prior informed consent is no longer acceptable. City council has a great opportunity to do the right thing, to do the best for the city and also be mindful that Aboriginal people are here and we're mixed among the populations. We're not enumerated, so just because we're not on statistics doesn't mean that we're not here. I stand in solidarity with all the people doing great work and let Kekala keen, the light of me honors the light in.
Thank you. Ahalheb Chanal Ka'ee?
All of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Please say it so we know how to say it correctly. Thank you.
I am an Aboriginal American matriarch and my title is Yajalaji Chanal Keen, located in the Delaware Treaty of Territory, correction, as you all will call so-called Pittsburgh. My statement today is to invoke my people's constitutional indigenous rights. We are the original beings, the original stewards of our ancestral lands, the Americas, including the islands, the Onkwa Onway from our great law peace. My people are acknowledged in multiple mechanisms of law and doctrine such as the Constitution Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed, the Delaware Treaty, the Northwest Ordinance, the A-Drip, the U-Drip, House Congress Resolution 331, 100, Congress Second Session, and the list continues. The city is under the jurisdiction of the state, the state is under the jurisdiction of the government. Are you going to honor your oath to the Constitution? Are you going to continue to commit 18 U.S. Code 2381 treason, 18 U.S. Code 1092 genocide, force simulation, eugenics, kidnapping, child trafficking, discrimination, colonization, 18 U.S. Code 242 information of rights under the color of law, 18 U.S. Code 241 conspiracy against rights, and the list continues of the nefarious actions against my people, the Aboriginal Americans. Abolge your oath to the Constitution, abolge your ancestors' oath to the Constitution, abolge your slaw ancestors' oath to the Constitution. And today, in regards of passing this legislation, you would be honoring your oath to the Constitution. We are not to be confused with Title 25 Native Americans who are immigrants, foreigners, citizens, and naturalized citizens under the jurisdiction of the United States, which is a corporation, AKA a business. You are on stolen land, you are having stolen, obtaining stolen resources. Are you going to continue to walk in the footsteps of your many nefarious immigrant ancestors such as Walter Asquith Plucker, a physician, the first Virginia State Register of Body Statistics from 1912 to 1946, a promoter of eugenics, a discredited movement nefariously pressuring state agencies to reclassify my people as colored? The policy's legacy was effectively to erase Indians as a identity and has made it difficult for Indians so-called to gain state federal recognition. My people are the Aboriginal Americans have been reclassified as so-called Indian, so-called colored, so-called Negro, so-called Black, and so-called African American. My people are, my people are your slaw and ancestors' ancestors' saviors, natural users, and ideal.
Are there any, there are no further registered speakers? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address city council? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address city council? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. I was at the top of Bedford Avenue. I know you say that we shouldn't bring anything to you. It seems to be that's what you're saying, that you haven't, don't have on the agenda. But I came today to speak about a construction company that's at the top of Bedford that are doing the sidewalks. And this company is V.I.G.L.I.O.T.T.I. The telephone number is 412-247-5563. And the reason why I'm bringing this to your attention, these men are good workers. I live on the third floor, so I watch them, watch them. They don't even have the lazy ones standing around. I went to two men that were standing and I was saying, I'm going to go to city council and tell them the good work that you do. And then they looked at me and said, no, we don't work here. And I looked, they have the white hats on, so that means that they're inspectors. They also agreed with me. I'm telling you this because city works, our public works sometimes don't treat us citizens like they should or do the work that they should. But this is a company that if we ever need work done by the city, I recommend them. I've seen the work. Also, again, I want to say thank you to the Pittsburgh police from the Katyware Irving Tire Residence, but you need to come back because they're back again, coming at night, racing. This is what I told you, I wanted you guys to see. Now, this, Brenda Tate, an ex-police officer, and this is Reggie Udine, sit down, Thaw Udine's brother, who have been cleaning up. Now, this man, Reggie came some years ago and he came down, he was saying about how filthy the outside of this building looked. He said, the dirt and the filth. And you started cleaning up, so it is being cleaned up here. But this man right here is up Bedford cleaning, I'm talking, cleaning the streets, picking up garbage from the city that your garbage men leave. You should have someone behind them with a broom and a shovel getting up the trash because the streets are full and it's mainly from your garbage can, garbage men, that they don't have time to pick it up. I also wanted to say that more and more, I want you guys to understand when I talk about my son. And this is December the 23rd. My son was killed on November the 7th of 2002. This is, this is December the 23rd. Two district attorneys appalled. Repeatedly, I have tried to talk to you per our conversation, my time is up. But thank you, city policemen. I know I talk about you when you wrong, but I can give you praise when you are right. You have done your job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to? Let me just say when we're done, we will get to Ikahana Halmakina. She's online as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bernie DePambeachview. I shared last week that I cannot, as pedestrians cannot get to Morpole. I loved it, the short time I was there, but I am now a Dormont Pole. We all dance, us old ladies get in there to the loud music and it's been wonderful. But one thing I've been noticing, and I brought it up at the BACC meeting, the first Thursdays of every month, I brought it up the last meeting and somebody else did, we need more garbage cans in Beachview. There's five between Coast and the Trolley Bridge. The Trolley Bridge has an additional two. We have, we're blessed with all these eating places and from Coast up to Chicken Latino, where there's four establishments up there, there's only one can. And then by Tim's and Slice, Sparkle Dragon, Ms. Joyce, we call her Broadway Mama, people are using her potteries as garbage cans. When I go to Dormont and Mount Lebanon on my little travels, 99%, if not 100%, no litter on the streets. What do they have? Doo-doo cans for doggies and they also have more garbage cans.
Reporting in progress.
Oh, I don't know how we can get that fixed, but it needs to be. I go around and I try to pick up and sadly, plastic bags full of doo-doo, people just drop them wherever. So, I don't know how that one's going to get fixed. This one, I don't know. I hope Mayor Ganey's hearing. I know we've talked about taxing UPMC. Maybe we can protect our residents. UPMC in 2023 is still being run, all their specialty departments by misogynistic males who will not recognize a complex trauma, complex PTS woman as myself. I repeatedly have to go to see specialists, they will not give me a female doctor. I don't know how that is possible. It should be a law that we can choose a female or a male to touch our bodies. I, if they're going to act like a corporation run by misogynistic men, sorry, guys, tax them. They're not being run like a place that is there to help people. When I'm asked by several different doctors, so what's your PTSD? That is unexcusable. I don't know what you can do. Or tell me what to do. Tell me who to go to. Thanks.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning, Sam.
Everyone in the audience. My name is Sam Gibson. I'm from Homewood or I represent that area. It's one of the multiple, many people that goes out there and through this place. National, I'm here because National Night Out is coming August 1st. It's a big deal to me because it brings everybody out. I was asked and charged with this a few years ago, right after COVID, myself and a couple of other organizations to come out here and really try to bring the community together. And I know, I see each and every one of you all periodically throughout the years, running and coming and going to different places. I would implore everybody who sits on council, if you can, get out to there. We have worked really, really hard this year to make National Night Out not only a place where you can feel safe, we make it safe because the things that we have taken, all of the, the four organizations that are out there, none of the ones who's on that collaborative, all the other small organizations has made it a point to make it a safe place. We're short on funds and we are, I'm here today because I'm asking, can we get the city street clean, man? Please. I mean, I went, we tried to put up a, we tried to hang up a banner. I called, I called, I didn't know who you need to call. I tried to, we tried to hang up a banner. Them people tried to run us off the road. That's number one. We were down next to, and I know the URA has this building, the Old Coliseum, there is more syringes in there than it is at the local health department. I'm, I'm being honest and this, this is a community thing. I'm not pointing no finger because you guys have done you all's job and I know we got the people out there. All I'm saying is particularly, we don't get it clean no other time. Can we ask that part of Frankstown, from the Coliseum all the way up to Baxter, if we can just get that clean and can we get a little bit of support? A little bit more support because if this is, if this conversation is about food, everything is free on National Night Out. Last year, we serviced 191 people. I got the proof in the numbers and proof by the people that comes out. This year, we're expecting to double that. I'm asking, please, clean up and a little more support. And hey, guys, if no one has told you, I thank you all for what you all do.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Seeing, oh, I apologize. We have Ikahana Halmakina online. Correct? Is she online? Ikahana Halmakina. One more time. Ikahana Halmakina.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, please continue.
Greetings and good day, everyone. My title is Chief Ikahana, the Grand Inca of the Airflock Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And today, I would like to talk about justice. Justice delayed is justice denied in America. Each of you have taken an oath to support, protect, and defend the Constitution for the United States of America and the Pennsylvania Constitution. Whereas according to Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed, meaning not to be enumerated, handled, or censured, make it perfectly clear what our status is. What does a city for all really look like? How could this be a city for all when indigenous people are overlooked and kept out of the economic development opportunities, our history hidden, our stories untold, misrepresented in schools, housing, and our identity and status ignored? It's time to level the playing field and provide opportunities to indigenous people where opportunities exist. Our pedigree, our lineage dictates that any opportunity that exists should be given and extended to indigenous people first. Opportunities to create sustainable communities where our culture can thrive, be free, to have land access. We would like to mitigate the likelihood that we'd ever be displaced again. We also anticipate the equitable distribution of funds given to the Food Policy Council and Food Justice Fund. So, we can create food forestry and expand the practice of permaculture to repair the damage that agriculture has caused to the land by consistently depleting the soil of vital minerals. This is not about individual feelings because your feelings do not supersede law. We should never be criminalized for exercising constitutionally protected and respected rights. Segments of the law is no excuse. The laws and protections are not up for debate. So, do not turn a blind eye to the law. Instead, pull up a chair and take a listen and take action and be an honorable member of society. By providing economic opportunities and equity, not just equality, we will not be silent anymore. Our voices shall be heard and the voices of our ancestors shall be resurrected. Thank you for today and thank you for listening. Have a wonderful day and an Ikeala keen.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers wishing to address city council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll begin with our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Ben President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1732, Ordinance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Ensuring Equal Employment Opportunity for Persons Previously Convicted, Title 1, Administrative, Article 7, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts, by adding a new section- by adding a new section 161.16A and deleting section 161.16H.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Coghill presents Bill Number 1733, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a commodities agreement or agreements with Stryker for a two-year warranty extension for equipment maintenance of the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services powered loaders and cots at a cost not to exceed $49,568 over one year.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1734, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Costs Associated with the Silverdale Avenue Multimodal Project, where PWSA would be responsible for paying 100% of the actual expenses involved in certain work described herein and itemized in Exhibit B in an amount not to exceed $117,896.65, and further amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Complete Streets by $117,896.65", in Bill Number 1793. Resolution transferring a total of $21,124 within the 2023 operating budget from the Office of Management and Budget to the Department of Parks and Recreation for the purpose of providing funding for a food justice coordinator position to administer the needs of the Pittsburgh Food Justice Fund.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1735, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $53,690,000, an increase of $50 million from the previously executed agreement for costs associated with the construction phase of the project. This resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at a cost not to exceed $62,250, an increase of $56,000 from the previous amendment. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Number 1736, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to take all necessary actions to acquire and secure a right-of-way and temporary construction easement as needed, including the taking of property by eminent domain, if necessary, involving the Charles Anderson Bridge Project. Bill 1737, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to receive grant funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program in the amount of $1,951,775 to support landslide mitigation efforts on Newton Street. Bill 1738, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to take all necessary actions to acquire and secure a right-of-way and temporary construction easement as needed, including the taking of property by eminent domain, if necessary, involving the Liberty Avenue HSIP Project. Bill 1739, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to take all necessary actions to acquire and secure right-of-way and temporary construction easement as needed, including the taking of property by eminent domain, if necessary, involving the Penn Avenue Phase 2 Project. Bill 1740, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with Larson Design Group, Inc., for Costs Associated with the South Side Signals Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $595,665.24, an increase of $81,192.67 to the amount previously authorized by Resolution 468 of 2021. Bill 1741, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to take necessary action to acquire and secure a right-of-way and temporary construction easement as needed, including the taking of property by eminent domain, if necessary, involving the Smithfield Street Project. Bill 1742, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the construction phase of the South Side Signals Project and providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $4,310,953, an increase of $220,313, reimbursable at 100%. Bill 1743, Ordinance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title 4, Public Places and Property, Article 1, Public Right-of-Way, Chapter 417, Pavement Protection, by inclusion of new section 417.08, Sidewalk and Curb Repair Program, to authorize the Directors of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and the Department of Public Works to develop and implement a program to provide options and incentives for property owner sidewalk repair and maintenance in lieu of prosecution. Bill 1744, Resolution Authorizing Acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh of the dedication of portions of North Beatty and Harvard Street being parcel B as laid out on the subdivision plan of block and lot, 83P 165, recorded in Plan Book Volume 301, Page 80, as recorded in the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate in the 11th Ward, 9th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh, at no cost to the city. Bill 1745, Resolution granting unto Stella Property Group, LLC, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a dog park at 6314 Broad Street in the 11th Ward, 10th Council District of the City of Pittsburgh, at no cost to the city. Bill 1746, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the PA Department of Aging for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $90,200 to support building repairs, including ceilings and flooring, the West End Healthy Active Living Center. Bill 1747, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 446 of 2021, which authorize the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements and/or commodity master agreements with Direct Energy Business, LLC, for the supply of electricity to city buildings and facilities by extending the current term by three years through 2029 and adding additional services, such as the purchase of renewable energy certificates from a sleeved wind renewable energy opportunity for an annual increase of $25,963.43, and a new total amount not to exceed $357,529.20. Bill Number 1748, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the PA Department of Aging for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $50,000 to support building repairs and upgrades, as well as art and recreation equipment at the Mount Washington Healthy Active Living Center. Bill 1749, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement or agreements with the PA Department, Community, and Economic Development for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $250,000 to support the design and implementation of improvements to Leslie Park in Lawrenceville focused on feasible, buildable amenities driven by a community engagement process. Bill 1750, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Vermeer, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $9,437.26 to purchase a mini-skid steer needed for the daily operations of the Forestry Division and providing for the payment of the costs thereof.
Madam President. Good morning. May I please ask for a waiver of the rules on Bills 1740, 1742, 1747, and 1750 so that they may appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda? I added two in there, Madam President, that are not on the agenda. They relate to the South Side Signal Project, which is under construction at this point in time.
I just want to make sure that you're not putting, moving forward the one for the sidewalks. That's not.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to waive the rules of council. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bills will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you. And Councilwoman Warwick. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Councilman Laval, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Laval presents Bill Number 1751, Ordinance Supplementing the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title 1, Administrative, Article 3, Organization, Chapter 141, Offices Generally, by adding a new section 141.03 to establish the Office of Equal Protection. Bill 1752, Ordinance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, City of Pittsburgh Service Workers Prevailing Wage Ordinance, Title 1, Administrative, Article 7, Procedures, Chapter 161, Contracts, by supplementing Section 161.38. Bill 1753, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Medical Debt Resolution, Inc., doing business as RIP Medical Debt for services relating to the purchasing and retiring of medical debt for certain City of Pittsburgh residents, for some not to exceed $1 million. Bill 1754, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Soft Side Signals by $210,953." Bill 1755, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2012, effective January 1, 2013, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2013 Capital Budget and the 2013 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2013 through 2018 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Recreation and Senior Centers by $10,544.74 and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $10,544.74." Bill 1756, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 858 of 2014, effective January 1, 2015, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2015 Capital Budget and the 2015 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2015 through 2020 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements by $3,325.15 and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $3,325.15." Bill 1757, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816 of 2015, effective December 18, 2015, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and the 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements by $10,632, Reducing Splash Zones by $16,544.79, and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $27,176.79." Bill 1758, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, effective January 1, 2017, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements by $23,249.20, Reducing Water Feature Upgrades by $118,476.61, and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $141,725.81." Bill 1759, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective December 23, 2019, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Recreation and Senior Centers by $950,000 and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $950,000." Bill 1760, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements, City Facilities, by $42,937.09, Reducing Recreation and Senior Centers by $1,612,626.32, and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $1,655,564.23." Bill 1761, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Recreation and Senior Centers by $192,000, Reducing Facility Improvements, City Facilities, by $400,000, and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $592,000." Bill Number 1762, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 27, 2022, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements, City Facilities, by $78,692, and Increasing Park Reconstruction by $78,692." And Bill Number 1763, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to execute a quitclaim deed or deeds and any other necessary or appropriate documents, agreements, and instruments conveying, as is, all of the city's rights, talents, and interests, if any, in Block 2J, Lot 16402, in the 1st Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, with an address of 200 Ross Street to the Urban Redevelopment Authority for consideration of $1 contingent upon the mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance, first entering into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA, setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveyances, and further setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of these properties to third parties. Council District Number 6.
Take a seat and take a drink of water. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1764, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Campbell Transportation Company, Inc., in Cleveland, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $15,803.37 for midstream fleeting and tug services for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day event on July 4, 2023. Bill 1765, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Green Gears in an amount not to exceed $14,300 for litter and waste control services provided for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day events on July 4, 2023. Bill 1766, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Marion Hill Associates, Inc., New Brighton, PA, in an amount not to exceed $26,030 for transportation, spud, and barge rental for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day events on July 4, 2023. And Bill Number 1767, Resolution Authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of RJ Brown Towing, Katanning, PA, in an amount not to exceed $8,320 for transportation and rental of a barge for City of Pittsburgh Independence Day events on July 4, 2023.
Thank you. And Councilwoman, do you have a motion to waive the rules of council?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to waive the rules of council on all four bills, Bills 2023, 1764, 1765, 1766, and 1767.
We have a motion.
I'll second, Madam President.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bills will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Well, thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1768, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a cable franchise agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania, LLC, at no cost to the city.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1769, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with OSMIMIUM DATA for Services Relating to the Administration of the City's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS Program for a Sum Not to Exceed $98,130 for the Payment of the Costs Thereof. And Bill Number 1770, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of City Planning to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in an Amount of $25,000 with a Local Match of $25,000 over one year for a Total Project Not to Exceed $50,000 to Support Planning Efforts to Stabilize and Preserve Abandoned and Historically Overlooked Structures in the Hill District.
Thank you. And now, myself. I have Chair of Hearings and Policy. I have several pieces of paper. I have one resolution. Let's take that first, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1771, Resolution Approving the Recommendation made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the Concrete Portion of Fersham Street Located in Crafton Heights be paved with Asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. And we have one reappointment of Councilwoman Strasburger.
Bill Number 1772, Resolution Reappointing Councilwoman Erica Strasburger as a Member of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, Board of Directors with a Term to Expire July 7, 2028.
Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
Uh...
What says?
I think approved.
Approved. It should be approved.
It should be approved. It says read, receive, and file. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you. And we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? I just want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger because she's been doing a really good job on that authority. So, thank you for your work there. And all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Councilwoman. Thank you for your continued work. And thank you to the Mayor's Office for putting you forward again. And we have three informing appointments. Madam Clerk.
Bill 1785, Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Matt Davis as Assistant Chief in the Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Fire. Bill 1786, Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Camelia Alarcon Chalecki as Assistant Director, Community Health and Safety in the Department of Public Safety, Office of Community Health and Safety. And Bill Number 1787, Resolution Informing Council of the Appointment of Jeffrey Trammell as Deputy Chief in the Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Emergency Medical Services.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
The move, Madam President.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. And I have one, Communications.
Bill 1791, Communication from Tobias Rather, Environmental Enforcement Manager, Department of Public Works, Submitting the Public Education Plan for the Plastic Bag Ban in accordance with City Code 610.05, Public Education Requirement.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
The move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll now move on to unfinished business. We have a motion. I need a motion to approve for the resolution, Madam Clerk, for Planning Commission Appointee.
Bill 1632, Resolution Appointing Melanie Ingami as a Member of the Planning Commission with a Term to Expire June 30, 2029.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilman Laval for holding the interview. Is there any questions or any comments? Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
The move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
She's approved. Thank you. And just for comment, I am holding the other appointees that were submitted to City Council until, there were several ones appointed and nominated. And so, council needs time to absorb some of the appointments. And I apologize for not doing my due diligence earlier on the weekend to make sure that I look through some of the appointments, or nominees, I should say. And we'll work with the administration and council and to get those back on as quickly as possible. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to our next order of business, which reports to the Committee for Final Action. Councilman Laval, Committee on Finance and Law.
Councilman Laval presents Bill Number 1726, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for July 12, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1649, Resolution Amending Resolution 320 of 2023, which authorized the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Sable &amp; Sable LLC by substituting the entity of Sable &amp; Sable LLC with that of Meyer, Unkavik, and Scott LLP for expert legal services in connection with the case in an Amount Not to Exceed $20,000. Bill Number 1686, Resolution Approving the Use Plan for the $3 Million Food Justice Funds as allocated in the City's American Rescue Plan pursuant to Resolution Number 762 of 2022. Bill Number 1687, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Precise Discovery in an Amount Not to Exceed $5,401.18 for Professional Services Related to Electronic Document Storage. Bill Number 1697, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 855 of 2011, Effective December 29, 2011, as amended and titled. Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2011 Capital Budget and the 2011 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2011 through 2016 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing District 6 Neighborhood Needs by $77,662.79 and Increasing Housing Development by $77,662.79. And Bill Number 1722, Resolution Directing the Department of Finance and the Law Department to Produce Deed Restrictions Relative to Affordable Housing for the Publicly-Owned Property in the Eighth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County, Block and Lot 0051E, 0016300000, Council District Number Seven.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilwoman Gross?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. On two things, I also just want to thank council for supporting the deed restriction on one, one single parcel. And I'm working with the administration to kind of see how it works. And hopefully, this will be a property that, in my district, that I would transfer to the Pittsburgh Land Bank to be disposed for affordable housing. And then, secondly, I also want to thank members for working so hard on bringing the food justice funds over the finish line. We've had briefings. We've had public hearings. We've heard powerful testimony. And we're really eager to see these funds be moved to strengthen neighborhoods, to strengthen families, and to invest in the city's food infrastructure. But I do have a slight amendment. Members will notice that I introduced a bill earlier in the agenda as a new paper to transfer money to the Food Justice Fund Coordinator position. And so, then, I'm going to motion to amend to just change the attachment to our current bill. So, the Food Justice Fund is Bill 2023-1686. And the plan is an attachment to that bill. And so, I have a strikeout in the middle of the plan to eliminate the position being funded from the $3 Million for programming. And so, that money could be used for better programming. And then, we're funding the position from the operating budget. And we'll have that on standing committee next week. So, motion to amend Bill 1686.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? I want to thank you, Councilwoman, for working through this. I think we know it's imperative that Director Vargas has some help in getting this program up and running. But I also think it's, you know, council needs to understand that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the City of Pittsburgh. And we have already given 109 positions to the administration. So, I want to thank them for working with you on where that money should come from other than adding a new position to the budget. Thank you.
I'm always in favor of giving Parks and Rec more funding for operating budget.
They do so much on such a small budget. And so, I just want to thank Director Vargas also for her work. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, back to the other bills. Any further discussion on the other bills? The remaining bills? All in, oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk?
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Hooray. Thank you. Bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Reverend Ricky... Wait, I apologize. And that moves us on to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1727, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for July 12, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1683, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Center for Employment Opportunities to Grant a License to Enter onto Certain City-Owned Parcels for the Purpose of Performing Certain Work, including Maintenance and Beautification Services that Fall Outside the Regular Work Assigned to City Employees at No Cost to the City. Bill 1684, Resolution Amending Resolution 194 of 2022, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements to Authorize the Pennsylvania Resource Council Providing Electronic Waste Collection and Recycling Services for City Residents by Adding an Additional One Year for an Amount Not to Exceed $175,000. And Bill Number 1685, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Duquesne Light Company, granting it a Permanent Utility Easement for the Erection, Installation, Use, Operation, Maintenance, Repair, Removal of Cable, Switches, and Transformers in Order to Service and Provide Power to Electric Vehicle Charging Stations and Other Fixtures and Apparatus thereto upon, over, along, across, under, and through city property located at 2945 through 3001 Railroad Street, Lot and Block 25B15, for Use by Electric-Powered City Sanitation Trucks at No Cost to the City.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilman Kraus.
Madam President, on Bill 1684, please refresh my memory. Are you the original author of the legislation that began electronic waste recycling?
I am.
I thought so. I just wanted to recognize you for that.
Oh, thank you. And I'm just going to say, worrying about what the outside looked like came when you started some bills yourself first. So, just seeing it.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Human Resources. Councilman Coghill for Councilman Burgess.
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Burgess presents Bill Number 1728, Reported a Committee on Human Resources for July 12, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1681, Resolution Providing for the Filing of Applications by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Department of Human Services for Grants in Connection with the Joint Jobs Initiative Program, Employment, Advancement, and Retention Network, and Providing for the Authorization to Enter into Agreements with Various Agencies and to Pay for Expenditures for Costs to Support, Implement, and Administer the Program, Costs Not to Exceed $3,828,594.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1729, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for July 12, 2023, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1691, Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name, Cougar Circle, in the Fourteenth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The Following Street Name was Approved by CPAC in May 2023. The Name Listed in this Ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code, Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. Bill Number 1692, Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name, Principal Lane, in the Eighteenth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per Recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The Following Street Name was Approved by CPAC in May 2023. The Name Listed in this Ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code, Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing. And Bill Number 1693, Ordinance Accepting Two New Street Names, Composite Street and Battery Street in the Fifteenth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh Street and Battery Street in the fifteenth ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street names was approved by CPAC in May, two thousand and twenty-three. The names listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four Public Places and Property, Chapter four-twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strausberger, Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill number seventeen thirty, reported a committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill sixteen eighty-eight, resolution providing for the designation of certain public properties within the Hayes and St. Clair neighborhoods to be formalized and adopted as a city park at no immediate cost to the city. Bill sixteen eighty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement with the Music Performance Trust Fund for the community concert series from which the city will receive a fee in the amount of two thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-two cent. And bill sixteen ninety, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement with the University of Pittsburgh Government Relations and Advocacy Office for the community concert series from which the city will receive a fee of two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to our last committee of the day. Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs. Councilwoman?
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number seventeen thirty-one, reported a committee on intergovernmental and educational affairs for July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill sixteen eighty-two, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for twenty-one eighteen Fifth Avenue.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The bill haven't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon, council will hold a briefing on Bill twenty-twenty-three, seventeen nineteen, as it relates to the URA district projects and programs. Sessions will begin at two and two-thirty. Council Standing Committee's meeting is scheduled for ten AM tomorrow, Wednesday, July nineteenth. To register to speak, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage, or call the clerk's office at four-one-two, two-five-five, two-one-three-eight. Speaker registration closes at nine AM tomorrow morning. And on Thursday, July twentieth, at ten AM, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill twenty-twenty-three, zero-three-seven-six, as it relates to the Land Bank Tri-Party Cooperation Agreement. And I'll keep it scheduled as long as they don't tick me off anymore. And to register to speak for these hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage, or call the clerk's office at four-one-two, two-five-five, two-one-three-eight. Speaker registration will close at nine AM tomorrow morning. Also, I just want to say, we have a ribbon cutting for the Shartshire Spray Park, which has been in the works for several years and finally coming to fruition. And we are very excited. That's at one o'clock on Friday with Mayor Gani. Reverend Burgess?
I want to register a aye votes for final votes for all the votes I missed.
Madam Clerk? Any further discussion? Councilwoman Strausberger?
Thank you. Well, thank, congratulations on your spray park ribbon cutting. That's amazing work. And I know you put your heart and soul into that. I just neglected to say while we were presenting the proclamation for Plastic Free July that there's a reason that we spend an hour and a half to two hours every time something surrounding litter or recycling or trash comes up in this council. And it's because every single member of this body cares deeply and has done work in the past and continues to do work to keep our streets and our rivers and our roads clean, whether it's introduction of bills to cut down on electronic waste or to figure out ways to do better litter pickup. So just wanted to acknowledge that. I should have said that earlier.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything else from any other members? Seeing none, have a motion to, there's no absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.